Public budget hearing for the school district and the library. So we are going to get started at six o'clock. We're going to start off first with Chris Leary from the Catskill Library. And he'll be presenting the budget for the library. Take it from Chris.
Great. Well, thank you everybody. Yes, and my name is Christopher. I'm the director of the Catskill Library. And I'm here to actually do two things. Do the annual report to the community and the budget proposal in preparation for the vote in a few minutes. So I know your time is valuable and you're very busy tonight, so I'm just going to jump right through, alright? So I just wanted to say a quick thank to all of our board of trustees for all of their service. I want to thank Joy, the president of our friend group who's here and with us tonight. And once again, my name is Christopher Leary. So, a quick statement about just who we are is we're the Catskill Public Library in Palenville Branch, and we're dedicated to providing free access to the world of ideas, learning, and entertainment for the enrichment of the community in the town of Catskill. Our mission is to continually improve and expand service materials and programs to best serve the needs and desires of those residents within the Catskill Central School District. Now, a quick couple of notes about our building. Since last year was filled with quite the adventure in buildings, let's say. So our Catskill Library Branch is our downtown main library. Established in eighteen ninety-three, it's housed in a neo-classical building courtesy of Andrew Carnegie. And we'll be coming up with some wonderful celebrations on the weekend next year. We're known for our local history collection, busiest lending library in Grand County, and our dedicated and helpful staff and our thriving office service and notary publics that goes on there. So, very busy library. All's here to discuss is the new Palenville Branch Library. For those that don't know, last July, about five months into my job, we got served our lease termination and with no availability of renewal. So we had six months to find a new location, renovate a new location, get moved in and open. Our first one fell through, and so we did it in four months and was only closed about three weeks. So, if you haven't stopped by, our new location is one four four Balden Avenue. It's in the bottom floor of the historic Woodbine Inn, which includes the historic prohibition era bar where multiple grandparents have come up to me to say, "I can't believe you got the Woodbine Inn." I met my wife at the bar of Woodbine Inn, and now I'm bringing my grandchildren to the updated community room, which is that bar now. So if you haven't, please come check out the new building. It has a large expanded community space and an outdoor space that we're just getting into how we're going to use it. When it comes to our budget for 2026, we're proposing a one million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar, four hundred and six budget, primarily comprised of support from the Catskill Central School District. That, the expenses that follow that primarily comprise of personnel, library services and materials, a small administration budget, and a bit of an increase in our building line items. We were in the old Palenville Branch Library for ten years, and so when we went to go out and find new locations, there was quite an escalation in rent. So that's certainly one of the things we've been dealing with and will deal with in the budget. So, request for 2026. I've talked about our proposed budget, our total tax levy request. It represents an eight point three five percent increase from last year. What that does, it supports our ongoing investments in vital physical and digital materials. It addresses the financial impact of that higher rent and additional staffing needed to maintain the new Palenville Branch. It accounts for expected costs and utilities, benefits, and facilities. We are using a small portion of our savings this year so that our tax levy request is within historical norms, while we protect the remainder of our capital because we're setting our sights next on renovating the Catskill Library due to us being a big part of the DRI grant that was successfully awarded to Catskill. So on a fun side note, we are going to have the opportunity to renovate our historic nineteen oh one Catskill Library in 2026, which happens to be the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary and birthday of that building and the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the United States. So it's a really cool opportunity and it sounds like it's a great time to celebrate. So as we move through things, we also did a potential impact study last year. So by no means exact science, but it wants to frame how you return your investment. So, the exercise goes is that if purchased elsewhere, our materials, our streaming services, our programs, everything really carries a numerical value that when you get your library card, is free. That includes materials. Our community office, I mentioned that if you ever come to the Catskill Library, it's thriving with scanning, photocopying, getting things done on the computer. We actually, all three of us became notaries. And so we're signing about two to three notaries a day, helping people complete what they need done in life. If you continue the exercise, same with our services, technology lessons, internet access, research assistance. We have thriving program attendance, movie showings, and we help people file the taxes. So, when you take some of those base numbers, every year, while I'm presenting to you the annual report to the community, we also have to compile our statistics and give that to the annual report to the state. So when you look at our statistics, what you see is a dramatic and continued rise out of the COVID recession, right? Everything had us closed down in COVID. So people continue to come back to the library, continue to get signed up, and continue to attend and come in our building for use. When you look at circulation, the same thing applies. It continues to grow year over year as people come back. Including last year, we circulated roughly seventy-seven thousand items, which comes to about two hundred a day. It includes renewals, but again, you can just see by the graph that coming back from COVID, it continues to go up and up. The trend's the same with the systems. It comes down for COVID, it's rising back up. And while our reference services may be leveling out or not as thriving as in years past, we're picking up the steam with technology assistance, technology help, office services, et cetera. So, when you factor those ideas in and you put together the statistics I just mentioned, we did this last year with last year's statistics from 2023, and we came out with a two to one ratio on the return of investment. This year, when we put in the same rubric, just because of the objective stats that we report, we kind of increased the return of investment by ten percent to a two point two to one ratio. On a personal side of the same exercise, I moved to Catskill in January of last year, lived in an apartment. I was lucky enough to buy a modest home around August or July. So what I did myself, kind of getting back into the library world, is I said, "You know, in COVID, I subscribe to way too many streaming services, and I'm going to purge all of those, and I'm going to dig my heels into using the library." So when you add up everything in that regard, I hate to say I was spending a thousand dollars a year on streaming services, but I let all of those go. And I've replaced them with library resources that I use, including digital apps, delivery from the rest of the Mid Hudson library system, and art collections here. I saved nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and my annual tax bill's about a hundred and forty. So net savings was around eight hundred dollars for myself. So as I've been liking to say, being net positive in savings while building a community asset is a great place for me to be. While those are all the numbers and all the statistics and everything, I also just wanted to run through our community partners and some of our photos just to show other things that we're doing. The Catskill Library and Palenville Branch continue to be community partners with a lot of others in the area. So, the Catskill Central School District, for instance. In spring break, we partnered with the Create Council on Art, the Catskill Central School District, and put on a four-day dance program here at the school, which roughly had about fifty children for four days just engaging during their spring break. We also recently engaged with the Catskill Repair Cafe as it's starting to come into the area so we can help promote and push out those good community resources. We visit senior centers, Home Sweet Homes, the Elliott to provide homebound services, and we make connections with the Bank of Grand County and Stewart Shops for grants and additional funding. So, when it comes to Catskill programs, we've got history talks. We've got talks on wildflowers and native butterflies. We held a solar eclipse viewing party at Beatty Powers Place last September, I think it was. I forget though. We had about a hundred and fifty people. We handed out glasses. It was really a great time. We reped the farmer's market. We have extensive summer reading programs, art classes. We have a Lego club. We've got a glow-in-the-dark painting exercises, movie parties and book parties. And even in discussions of assembly earlier, we also have an award-winning Silly Scientist program. So if you've ever not gotten to come to Silly Scientist, I highly recommend it. There is nothing cuter than a room full of kids in little teeny lab coats, all doing silly scientist projects and engaging in STEM programs or STEM education. When it comes to Palenville and the new Palenville programs, if you've ever been out to the Palenville Branch Library, you understand how much of the community center feel it is. There are art classes and craft classes for every age group. So we've got adults, we've got children making crafts, we've got Easter bunny celebrations, we've got button making, and as mentioned, we have a new community room where what you see here is a multi-generational bingo, getting together to hang out. And all of this while, we're checking out materials, engaging in the reference needs, and taking care of business. When it comes to resources and materials, I'm also really happy to update everyone that the Mid Hudson Library System, which we are comprised of, recently just put out their first digital app. So now, you can access the library, all the collections, everything you want on your smartphone. I've also built it out so that it links to all of our digital resources. So if you don't want to use Amazon Kindle, you can use Libby by Overdrive. I was a big Spotify user, now I use Freego. We've got Canon and Dookla for streaming DVDs or streaming movies, the great courses if you want to stretch your lifelong learning, and a host of others that are a bit too much to put on one's screen. That's combined with the extensive physical collections of both branches, as well as the entire Mid Hudson Library System. So I actually, in taking over and just listening to interactions, I'm always surprised that a lot of people don't know that we're two branches of the sixty-six Mid Hudson Library System. And at your fingertips is a courier or delivery system to bring any book from any of those libraries roughly to your pickup location within one or two days. As mentioned as well, both of our libraries are intricate learning places of the community. So outside of homeschool and work, it's a place for people to gather, to learn, and to reengage in the lost art of hanging out with your neighbor and doing things in person. So it's really quite, quite meaningful. When it comes to our 2026 goals and objectives, it's really pretty straightforward. I want to continue to return your investment at a greater ratio. So this means more outreach programs, more understanding of what we can do for you, and increased usage of that asset. At the same time, as mentioned, it's a historic opportunity to renovate our hundred and twenty-five-year-old Catskill Library and prep it for the next hundred and twenty-five years of history. So, right now, what I'm doing is I just took a webinar on grants for construction to pair with the DRI grant so that hopefully within 2026, we can have an incredibly fun project and get the community really involved there. Other goals include continuing to expand our offerings even outside the walls. We'd like to hold more events here at the Catskill Central School District, the high school. It was really great to see that happen. We're going to continue to offer technology classes and expanded office services. It really is a thriving office service business here at Catskill, so we're really trying to lean into that because we know how useful it is. There's a new career services building in town, and I spent a fair amount of my first career in a library, actually coaching resumes, coaching entrepreneurial businesses and small businesses. So I'd love to get back into that. We're talking about a winter reading initiative. We just expanded our evening hours at both locations. So Palenville used to be open for five days, now it's open for six. And we slightly expanded our Saturday hours and I encourage you on the storytime for Saturday. And that's actually where our heads is going, is I know people are busy, and I want to bring more of the resource at the times when I know you have some free time to come and engage. So evening hours, weekend hours, we will probably be open for a full day on Saturday because we now have a staff number that's kind of ready to hold it down. And so we're looking forward to more exciting opportunities there. Outside of that, I would like to just thank you all for your time and listening. And if you have any questions, I would love to answer them. I've got business cards here if you wanted to talk later, or I'll be here throughout the evening and you can chat them as well. Any questions? How do I do on time? I timed myself at fourteen-four the first time and I felt like I did it fast there. How long? Sixteen? Oh wow. It feels quick up here, but it's longer in time, so. That's it? I guess that, yeah, that's really it unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah.
So next, myself and Brett Miller will be going through school district budget for next school year. I know we presented on this multiple times. Very proud of the hard work that was done, going through the process to really not remove any services, keep the level of programming for our kiddos at a very reasonable tax levy number, which is well below the allowable base from New York City. So like I said, we started, we were actually very excited. We started the process so much earlier in the year than we have in the years past. So it really allowed us to get the tenure numbers a lot sooner, which, you know, just for the process allows you to go a lot sooner. So like I said, we are requesting, we have the board approve the two point oh percent tax levy increase for next school year. Our agenda, very similar to what we've been presenting on. Our principal priorities, drivers, revenues, expenditures, some comparison, and, you know, some items that are still sort of up in the air, like I'll explain that later. But we'll explain that, go through the process. So our priorities, we lay out right from the beginning. We're really focusing on that, reducing reliance on fund balance. Like our long-range financial plan said, if we continue on the track of using the amount of fund balance we've been using, the district would bankrupt in approximately five years. And that was done, that was successful in our budget process, which is great. Maintaining our active programs, like I said earlier. We were successful in getting into this process. Preserving our PPS app, AIS reading supports, you know, we did that. Right now, we have that for no positions being cut for next school year. Preserving our field trips and other opportunities for all students, and all our athletic programs and art programs. So, once again, we hit all our budget priorities going through this process and really taking up our pencils when we had to, when we got into the middle grade. Budget drivers. So a lot of this stuff was pieces that we've discussed throughout the process. Some of the ones we, I really wanted to highlight was we are adding in an EML teacher based on the need of our district, so we're adding a position. You know, I know here we were a potential decrease in Title I funds, like I presented earlier. We have lost Title I funds due to the demographics of our school district. Our poverty level in our school district continues to decrease. And as that occurs, and the Title I eligibility funds, we will get less. So I think this school year, it was right around twelve thousand dollars less that we'll be receiving next year for Title I funds. And the other piece, which is still up in the air, and we have a lot of reserve bonds still, is our charter connections grant. You know, it is still liable for next year, but the federal government is continuing to talk about as recent as, would you say one day, correct? Where they talk about removing funds for social workers and social movement needs in school. But is the federal government actually going to do it? You know, they're talking about it, we don't know. So once again, that's that unknown number. You know, we will have, we have, we know we have the funds for next year to support it, even if parts of the grant get removed, but for the years following that, we just won't. And health insurance costs, I know we always talk about it at lunch, right? Health insurance costs, increase of sixteen percent. I've said it multiple times, but I say when I talk to a lot of people, health insurance is going to bankrupt our society. And we just have to work together as a community on how we sort of manage that piece for everyone. Highlights, no reduction in faculty and staff, adding transportation for pre-K students, which we're very excited about that. I know I was discussing with Chris earlier about their pre-K programs that they run. And I think, hey, keep an eye on your numbers because if our numbers increase because we don't have transportation for our pre-K students, that might affect the library. So, but we are very proud of that. Adding, we're meeting tomorrow, Friday, the finalized adding of fourth pre-K classroom at the elementary school in preparation for adding transportation and hopefully more kiddos taking advantage of that. No loss of extracurricular activities. There are areas that we actually might be extending extracurricular activities, which one's something we're excited about. All student programming, all our honors program AP courses, all that stuff stays intact, and additional EML teachers. So once again, we kept everything with the removal of a lot of funds. And you guys will see as budgets come out across the region. I was being with superintendent this morning and either school districts are either capping out their tax levy, so going at the maximum tax levy. They are maxing out their tax levy with cutting positions, or they are going above their tax levy and cutting positions. And our district is not any of those positions, right? Our district is going below the tax levy and cutting appropriately. So really, over the last two years, we've really focused in on looking at our budget, going through and analyzing every position, every program, every piece of hardware and software, adjusting how we do our purchasing here so that we can really sustain the work that we're doing here at Catskill. Want to go for this part, Brett?
No. First of all, thank you for having me tonight. Thank you everyone for coming. This is just a simple slide. This zero is no magic here, it's actually a state law. We have to balance our expenditures with our revenues. But we just wanted to show, this is kind of where we came from way back when in early February. I believe we're at about two million dollars or so on deficit with the rollover. And Dr. Wilson's correct, what we did in the business office, we're here with partner, our district treasurer, not partner. We took a look at, we did a running average and we took a different approach this year. So we actually looked at all of our actuals going back for years to see what our actual spending versus what we were budgeting because we knew we were in a tight spot in terms of the numbers. So this number started off here, and then as we started to look into, you know, a lot of areas, we started to notice that we, you know, we had been over budgeting for quite some time. So this year's budget, we hope, is more in line with, you know, what we're going to spend. That's good news. The bad news is, is there are pockets in there that enabled us to kind of mitigate certain situations that would crop up during the school year. So next year, you know, this is good on one hand, but on the other hand, I would issue a cautionary tale. We have to be very careful with our spending. Keep a careful eye on our revenues and, you know, Matt does a great job of keeping the price constantly. Revenue's coming up from the state and now all of our other revenue streams, so it's good. But yeah, this is, this is a state law, so no magic here. We didn't have this here, they could have voted a couple of weeks ago, so thank you. So again, this is our projected expenses and revenues are obsolete. You know, over last year, about under eighty thousand dollars broke, our number was. So this is the three-part budget, administrative program and capital. It appears on page eight in your budget book, it kind of walks through that. But this is basically what it costs to run the district. This is our teaching program, our instructional staff, benefits, all that stuff. Excuse me, and capital, kind of the O and M piece to the operation, salary, equipment, contracts, stuff like this, we're in the process of putting in final touches and fixing the air conditioning here. So that includes all of that. So the three-part budget, you know, we were down a little bit if you take a look at the budget book administratively. Most of that was accounted for, you know, position, HR director that's so long here, point cast ourselves up. And then programs up a little bit, capital up a shade as well. But by and large, these expenses are aligned with last year's. Want to talk this, or not really, or?
I mean, we went through it, we've spoken, yeah, we've gone through it so many times in the last, I think, two to three meetings prior to tonight. It hasn't changed. And like I said, we've really got to do a lot of stuff earlier than we did if we want people to be aware of the situations that we could occur. But really what it comes down to is sort of what Brett said earlier, that really looking at three-year averages and looking at actual expenses is a lot different than what the process has been here in the past. So really looking at honing our numbers and sort of ensuring that our pockets of money are correct in different places. And that's why you see, you know, certain shifts in some of the areas. It might be, you know, thirty thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars because we were really moving the money to where it should have properly be aligned. So a lot of it's shifting in it, or it might be just more realistic of a number in a lot of areas. So that's sort of where a lot of this had come from. A good example of that is miscellaneous that looks like about three hundred thousand. That's in line with our insurance recoveries over the past two to three years. That was being underestimated in the budgeting for the last couple of years. But when we looked, we were coming with about three hundred thousand dollars or so on those average years. We budgeted for that as a revenue. So, you know, there were things like that that we did notice that we just realigned. You know, a couple of things that have changed, the library service went up in a mess. I think Matt explained it at the last meeting, he did a really succinct explanation. We have, we do have reserves and we have to show money going in and out of those. So this is for ERs, TRs, and the third one, we're a little nervous here. So we have, it was capital, you know, for four hundred thousand. So we, we know we're going to have monies going in and out of there. We have to use a backlog and, you know, hopefully we'll replenish fully at the end of the school year. Expenses is similar. Some of this is just moving funds, some of it was moving funds around, but some of it was really honing in on what needed to be done, you know. But basis of trace, you remember last school year, we actually had our new transportation contract? So which was a large hit to our budget last school year. But now we're just, based on the contract, we're just increased by CPI, which is two point...
Two point nine. It's two point nine percent this year, so. And just so you know, this instruction, a lot of this were BOSI's costs. We were subscribing and budgeting for many, many services that actually we weren't even using. And so we went back and took, okay, so most of this instructional shift is about four, five hundred thousand dollar BOSI's reduction this year. But that's really what we were paying. I think we're at like four point three this year. That service scheduled to be like four and a half million dollars or something like that, just a shade under. And we were budgeting in about six, or five rather. So we just aligned it with the services that we're contracted with. So that's why that shift is there, that's not a result of job loss or anything like that. It was really what services weren't we using, wanted to sign up for, and we hadn't touched. So that's really where it came from.
And really, that's really it? So we'll leave it open to any questions anyone has about the budget and what the budget packet. Your hands from four. It's not married.
It's not directly, though. You just mentioned the poverty level here have been improving. So we have been, for a while now, eligible for the, for all students. And how much, if it keeps improving, I can just...
I think the answer to your question is twofold. The first one is, we wrote the grant, I believe it was a three-year grant. We did it last year, so we, no matter what, we have it through next year. But I also know the governor did propose free breakfast and lunch for all, no matter what. So I think right now, I think the plan of attack is we pull off, we watch and see how that, you know, how's that play out and move it forward. You know, something that we are very proud of this year, that it affects the budgeting process is that there's a loan from the, from Food Service against the district for a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars, right? So we were not making money, and the way the food service is supposed to work is we're supposed to be even. This school year, we've adjusted a lot of our practices. So we are projected for the end of this school year to fully payback that loan against the school district and the general fund. And then, next year, hopefully project picking up more money or more... And then, next year, hopefully project picking up more money or more, uh, contractual services that, remove it from the general fund and pick it up through food services because of the, the revenue now that we're creating through our food service program. So that was a big shift from last school year to this school year. Um, we partnered, if you guys remember, um, we are partnering with Capri to BOSI's, um, for food service now. I mean, that, that increased buying power, buying in bulk, right? Um, as well as getting BOSI's aid back on, on some of the pieces of that has really helped us get to where we are, and that should help us for the longevity of this community progress.
And I'm going to put in a plug here, and I want to, I'm glad that Dr. Wilson mentioned that. Kelly Shankman is our food services specialist for BOSI's. Um, she's, she's incredible, she's, she's very, very organized. And what Dr. Wilson said is correct, we're getting, you know, through that purchasing power, our, our operational costs, our food costs are way down, you know, and our sales are up. Uh, we're typically on about, you know, ten, fifteen percent per, a month this year. So to put that in perspective, that's about ten to fifteen thousand dollars up in just sales, that doesn't account for, you know, purchasing power and some other, um, things. So we're, we're seeing quite a bit of savings. Some ones have been higher or lower, but we're seeing, especially now. Uh, we just got, uh, new beverage coolers, new crescenties, so we're selling stuff out of that, um, that are a big hit with kids, and we're really starting to see a real growth in our breakfast program, which is almost nothing. So, you know, kids are coming to school, they're eating, um, they're ready for school, and they're ready to learn. So those, that's a real positive, so I'd publicly thank, uh, Kelly, she's amazing, she's really great, she communicates incredibly well.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, everyone, so that will close out the public budget hearing for this evening.
Next year, I'd recommend putting in a budget line so that, so that Chris can actually design our presentation. His library presentation was incredible.
Well, I just imagine that someone else helped you a little. But this is great, I think this is improved, right? Yeah, this is improved.
So I guess Mike, I'll turn it over to you, Mike.
All right.
Hi, everybody. Well, this guy, because I was going to ask Chris to do my presentation next. Oh, okay, sorry.
Well, if anyone needs a TANBA lesson, we do give TANBA lessons, and we can be happy to sit down and show you what to do.
We have a commander, uh, designated emergency access over here, here. Just stand for a second.
To the United States of America, and consider the Republic of Christianity as one nation under God, indivisible, literate, and just as for all.
Roll home.
Father Martin Paul, Church Saint Shane, Mary Deesom, Lord John Frey, Mary Joseph Lilla, Laura Dietrich, Jeff Holiday, Karen Lee, and White Castle.
Good morning.
Yes.
So I'll write this superintendent report. All right, so we'll start off, good evening, everyone, we're going to start off with, uh, Dr. Silver now, and our policy initiative.
I'm sorry, I'm so papillobious as soon as the presentation went over here. But Chris, if you want to. So you, you'll, see on the agenda, there are not as many policies, um, that's my fault. I actually went on vacation, so I knew that was going to happen, I apologize, um, but my wife does not oppose this, so. Um, again, mission statement? Oh, I went to, uh, Mexico.
Oh.
Yeah, it was nice, it was fun. Vision? We all know at this point, the purpose is to, at the very least, get everything up and running in terms of required policies. Um, so we did a whole lot at the last meeting. So you're going to do your second read on the, all those special education policies that we talked about last time, um, and your evaluation of school board operational procedures that we brought up. Um, a lot of them, like that one, we didn't make any changes on, as you recall. It's just a reaffirmation that you've looked at it again, so that moving forward, people know that as of 2025, that's where you folks stand. Again, another set of special education policies, and I'll remind you that a lot of these are renumbered because of this, those new numbering sequences and additional special education required policies. And then the set of them that need to be removed from the numbering system, partly because they've been renumbered in the new system, and they would be redundant to the new policies that you voted on for first read last time. So the, the first thing I'll remind you of is last time, I, I'm going to go to the fourth bullet, rather than just start at the top. Last time, I, uh, had missed one of the policies that needed to be removed, and that's your elimination, or your 4321.4, which is your independent educational evaluators. Remember, we talked about how the process that you go through, and then the limitation on if somebody cancels, uh, a session with the independent partner. Um, you still have that policy, it's numbered in a different place now because of the, the renumbering, uh, procedures. The next one I want to talk about is 4321.10. This is a policy that outlines your procedures for parentally-placed students. So if a parent places a student in a special program, you still have things that you're required to do in terms of special education. But it also, it, it's considered to be a local policy, but there's ed law to this as well, which really kind of makes it good for you to put this in place. It also protects you in case you have a dispute with a parent. If you're going through a dispute with a parent and they place in a private, uh, program, they can't just pick their program. You're still in process of creating the I U P for the student. They can't circumvent that process to go to their spot. So it provides you some protections as well in the process. Fifty-five hundred is student records. Student records is very similar to your current policy, but what it does is it adds in a section of the definition of terms that people read throughout, so it makes it clearer for folks to understand. And it also takes into account ed law two D, which is the private, the data privacy law that went into place a couple of years ago. The older version of this policy didn't take that into account because the law is fairly recent. I want to say the last five year, four, five years. So that will update your policy for that one. The next one is 2245, and this is the one that I've been talking about that will be required as of July first. But what I'm going to ask you to do tonight is make a motion to pull that from tonight's agenda, because I'm still waiting on attorney review to get the thumbs up on that. And I would rather you not vote it into place and then have to vote it out and then vote it back in. So just waiting on attorney review for that one. So those are the ones for tonight. Again, the big ones are, are your, cleaning up all of your special education policies with your second read and adoption for tonight. Any questions? Okay, so when you get to the agenda item, someone would need to make a motion to pull that one, and then someone would need to second it, and then we'll put it on the next order. Any questions? All right. Again, not as dynamic as Chris', but.
I think Chris's services are part of the library offers.
Oh, so I'll make it for you to get more. Is he, is he something the library part?
Yes.
It's a stop on line.
All right. The last thing I have, um, right now was the district received in the mail a recognition for a board member. Um, so I would like to pass that recognition along to the board member with his certificate. So, um, the School Board Association would like to recognize Joe Izzo for the work that he's been doing in, um, not just he worked with the school board, um, but the professional development and the, there's something outside of here. So you do, you, you attend conferences, you go to PD's, you're doing PD's online, to all, to expand your knowledge of working on a school board. Um, so the School Board Association recognized you that you have, uh, a third point of seventy five, seventy-five points of your ongoing professional development and work as a school board member. So, Mr. Izzo, congratulations. And that's all for the superintendent report.
Acceptance of the agenda as amended and removed, policy 2245, first read.
I'd like to make a motion to pull it.
Thank you. Second, Lenora, all in favor?
As a 1312.
Approval of minutes. Board of Education hereby approves the following Board of Education meeting minutes. People first, 2025, where you are viewing. Motion, my counsel, second. Joe Izzo, all in favor? Motion there. Oh, sorry. The Board of Education hereby approves the following Board of Education meeting minutes for April 22nd, 2025. Second, add all in favor, opposed. Motion there. Here is all, the Board of Education hereby accepts the following treasurer reports as submitted by the District of the Treasurer, March 2025. Uh, motion, my counsel, a second, Lenora, all in favor? Opposed, motion there. Acceptance of claims order report. Here is all, the Board of Education hereby accepts the claims order report of March 2025 as submitted by the claims order. Motion to accept the claims order report. Joe Izzo, second. Lenora Frey, all in favor? Opposed, motion there. Acceptance of additional recommendations of the Committee on Special Education, Committee on Preschool Special Education for Classification of Children with Disabilities. A motion to accept the recommendation. Patty, Christian, second. Lenora Frey, all in favor? Opposed, motion there. Acceptance of additional recommendations of the Committee on Special Education, Committee on Preschool Special Education for Classification of Children with Disabilities. Motion for the acceptance of the recommendation. Patty Shane, second, my counsel. All in favor? Opposed, motion there. Acceptance of Section 504 combination plan. Superintendent schools recommends the Board of Education accept the recommendation for student 31003314 presented by Section 504 combination plan. Motion to accept. Lenora, first, second, Joe Izzo, all in favor? Opposed, there. Approval of the transportation contract here is all, the Board of Education hereby authorizes upon transportation contract for student transportation for 2425. The government, now, the school. About twenty-three eighty dollars for that. A motion for a contact. Mary, all in second. My counsel, all in favor? Opposed, motion there. Approval of CTA memorandum of agreement. Here is all that the Board hereby approves a memorandum of agreement binding between the district and the Capitol Catskill Teachers Association, dated May 1st, 2025. Here is all, Board of Education authorizes superintendent to sign this agreement. Motion? All right, a second.
I have a question. I would like to consider this, uh, agreement in executive session, please. I need some clarification on it, and in order to discuss it, it really is a contractual issue we should discuss in executive session.
Motion to. Okay, so I need a motion to remove that from the agenda.
It can, it, when we come back out of the executive session, we certainly can vote on it. I just need some clarification on it, please.
So we're not really removing it? Postpone?
Table, you want to table it later on, or you want to table it for the next meeting? No, 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 later on. I, I don't want, we should vote on this, I just have some questions concerning the language of the con, of alignment of the agreement, and I, just need some clarification on it. So I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed or, you know, against the motion, I just would rather have some clarification on, on the duties of this individual, whether that may be.
Okay, so, we can't discuss that here?
Pardon me?
We can't discuss it here, because we're not mentioning anybody anyway, please.
No, no, I, I, we don't have, we don't have any to mention, and we don't usually do that. I, I guess, I, I certainly can ask the question, I, it's no big deal about it. I just was wondering why, um, this position, quote position, is not within the administrative position, and not, uh, outside of the Catskill Teachers Associations agreement? Why are we not creating a dean of students as an administrative position? And that's, that's, that is my.
When we rolled it out last year, we didn't have a fiscal responsibility and the cost for administration without paying the cost if it was a teacher on sessions. So that was one of the reasons we went in that direction. And the other reason we went in that direction actually last year was we were trying to preserve CTA positions. Um, so by, uh, you know, a person, an individual took the position, um, you know, it, it prevented us from having to, uh, do a potential cut of a CTA member.
So, so if this was outside of the contractual agreement between the Teachers Association and, and the school district, that individual would no longer be a member of the, uh, teachers, Catskill teachers, you mean?
No, that person would revert back to their original position, but then it would remove positions from, it would remove the last person hired, um, from their tenure era.
So right now, there is a person acting in that responsibility?
Yes, a part-time employee.
Part-time employee, correct. And that, that part-time employee is, is a teacher or?
It's a CTA member, yes.
Well, it's a member, but it's, it's not a teaching position?
Teaching position.
It's a teaching, okay. Thank you, that's, that's really all I needed to know. So.
We can, we can oversee it. Okay. So.
I already made my.
All in favor? Opposed?
No, I'm not.
In favor?
I'm, yeah, I'm, like I said, I just need some clarification, please.
Approval of C S E A memorandum of agreements. Here is all that the Board hereby approves a memorandum of agreement binding between the district and the Civil Service Employees Association, Incorporated, Local One Thousand, A P, A N L C I L, dated May 1st, 2025. And here further is all that the Board authorizes. And here is further resolved that the Board authorizes superintendent to sign this agreement. Motion to accept it. Three. Patty, the second, Mary, all in favor? Opposed?
I don't oppose, but I need to abstain.
Okay. He's going to abstain. Motion there. Here is all the Board, the Board hereby accepts the first reading of the following policies. 4231.10, programs and services for currently placed. 5500, student records. Here is further resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the first reading to eliminate the following policies. 4321.10, independent education evaluations. A motion to accept. My counsel, second, Patty, Sherwood Shane, all in favor? Opposed? Motion there. Yeah, we're, thank you. Here is all that the Board hereby accepts a second reading and adoption of the following policies. And I'm going to give you permission to just use the numbers. 0310, 4321, 4321.01, 4321.02, 4321.04, 4321.05, 4321.06, 4321.07, 4321.08, 4321.09, 4321.10, 4321.13. Here is further resolved, the Board of Education hereby accepts the first readings to eliminate the following policies, 4321.1, 2.2, 2112, 2115, 2116. Okay. Motion? Mary, second, Lenora, all in favor? Opposed? Motion there. Is someone concerned? So we have. For your resignations. For resignations on retiring, transfer, and subsequent appointment. Those that are leaving, the retirement, another one, they like to kind of improve their service or community and wish you the best in the future. The other ones, looking forward to having a successful career. Here is all the Board of Education approves the following personnel agenda, names 1, 2, 3. Motion.
If we take off someone who wishes to leave, then I can't leave, right?
If we remove both.
Sorry.
Sorry, Brett. I think that's kidding.
We don't want to say no.
A motion to accept? Patty, second, Mary, all in favor? Opposed? Motion there. Any board reports? Meeting reports?
And other matters.
And other matters.
I have a little one.
Any other matters?
I have my own.
All yours.
Thank you. I would personally like to say a few words about my disappointment in ending the long tradition of holding a formal kindergarten graduations here. For decades, I believe at least the past 40 years, I'm fairly certain of that, we had held a graduation ceremony for all kindergarten classes together. I have questioned why we have ended this three times. When we were working on the, this year's calendar, last year, we approved it last year for this year, I questioned it then. I questioned it in the beginning of this school year, and I questioned it again a couple of weeks ago. There is still no clear answer that has been given to me. On May 1st, a parent's square message went out to say that there would, that there would be something held in each kindergarten classroom for that class. But only two people per student could attend, and there's no date yet. So I'm trying to picture a classroom of kindergartners, say 20 kindergartners, with their 40 parents in the classroom doing this recognition for kindergarten, and they think they are not permitted to have their siblings or grandparents or friends attending. Again, this year, there will be a pre-k graduation ceremony for all the classes together. So the kindergarten class this year, the first year forever, there's not going to be a formal kindergarten ceremony for all the classes together. Some of them, some of those students did not attend pre-k here last year. So, I mean, these kindergartners, those kindergartners did not have a graduation, will not have a kindergarten graduation and will not have one until fifth grade. And I'm very disappointed that we stopped that tradition, and I've never heard why. And I still don't have an answer when these are going to occur in the classrooms and how they're going to do that, and the biggest disappointment to me personally and other people I've spoken to. And I just wanted it to be kind of informally on record. I know it can't be in the minutes, but I just wanted it to be known how sad this is. It's sad. Was it money? Because if it was money, I would pay for it.
I have just a minor, not a minor issue, it's actually a pretty good issue. And reviewing the budget and looking at what the tax levy has been the last 10 years, 10 years. The school district, this school district, has held itself to the 2% cap, which is not necessarily 2%, it could be 3%, it could be 4%. This school district has held the school budget to 2% over the last 10 years. So to me, that shows a very good track record on how this school district is handling the school's money and the taxpayers' payment. And except for three years, 2018 and 2019 and 2020, they were above 2%, 3%, 3%, almost 4%. So in the last four years, the school district has brought their budget down to what I believe is a very reasonable amount. And I think the public should be pleased with the fact that we are holding our school budgets to the New York State tax cap of 2%. Thank you.
I'd like to say something about the unkindly passing of Ochardo. He's, the whole school board and administration assured everything was up for their family. It's just tragic when you have to marry a child. It hit kind of hard because he was in the same friend group as my son, and just to see how he was shaken up by it. We're all thinking of that family, that son, and it was just very tragic and awful. And he will be missed, and it's a great thing.
I believe superintendent, so. Right. Okay. Hold on, I'm going to make an action. So I need a motion to go into executive session. We will not be taking any action when we come out. For, there was some issues, some discussion of employment of certain individuals and evaluation process, self-evaluation discussion. A motion for executive session. So move. Joe Izzo, second, Lenora, please, all in favor? Opposed? Right. So we're going into executive session. We will not be taking any action when we come back.